It is 5 o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the committee to order. Let me just double check that she's not in. Attendees waiting to be let in. Nope, okay. So I'll call the meeting to order and ask Sherri to please call the roll.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
President from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
Present virtually and in Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Dunbar.
Present from Lansing.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present virtually from the Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Betts.
President, or sorry, not president, present from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Garza.
I'm here and I'm participating virtually from Lansing, Michigan.
You have seven members present, you do have a call.
Thank you very much, and we will just keep an eye out for Councilmember Spitzley and let you know when she's here. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from November 6th, Council Vice President Hussein.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I would move the meeting minutes as presented.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, would please call the roll.
And there is a correction. It's actually November 9th.
Oh.
Then it does say the 6th, but your last meeting was November 9th, so I apologize for that.
Well, that's all right. So the minutes are correct, but the motion just, what was on the agenda was incorrect, so we'll take that as a friendly suggestion for the meetings of the 9th.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
And I do not see Councilmember Spitzley here yet, so motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Per usual, those wishing to make comment on agenda items this evening, if you're here to comment on anything from the city council meeting at 7, that's later on in the evening. But the public comment for tonight is about the items on the committee whole agenda. You will have three minutes to do so. Sherri will keep the time. And to do that, you need to raise your hand, and you do that on a computer with Option Y if you're a Mac, Alt-Y if you're using a PC, star 6.
Star 9 for the phone.
Star 9 on the phone, sorry, star 6 unmuted, star 9 to raise your hand. So Alt-Y, Option-Y, star 9, or push the raise hand button on your touchpad. So right now, we have so far three folks going, and after the first speaker concludes, we will close the slate, allowing folks to comment. The first person, their phone number ends with 970, so if City TV would please allow that person to speak. And then the person ending with 970, if you would unmute yourself, your three minutes begins now. There you are.
Hi there, this is David Fisher, and I just wanted to follow up with some questions that I had previously that I'd raised at the community meeting here in the cul-de-sac at Fred Morris back in October regarding the Montgomery Drain Project. And I was asking on behalf of all of our neighborhoods, but I wanted these questions, I raised these questions also so the council could have some better perspective on the impact for this neighborhood specifically. And Mr. Spatafor wanted me to email the questions because they couldn't be addressed on-site at the meeting, which I understood, so I emailed them the next day. He confirmed receipt, but we never got an answer. I brought it up at the November 9th meeting, and I got another confirmation email from him saying that he would continue to look into this and never heard another thing again. The questions were, what is the calculated stormwater runoff for the neighborhood as a whole? And what is the calculated runoff for the entire project? And these stormwater calculations already exist somewhere since they would have had to been done by the engineers during the design phases and have to be approved for construction. And I asked that those spreadsheets be provided. And also, what is the total cost of the storm drain repairs being performed within the neighborhood boundary? And then also, what is the total cost of the entire drain project? That way, we can see what kind of proportion that our neighborhood has on the project as a whole. Now, along with that, I have another question about the other amenities that are gonna be going on in the park that have nothing to do with stormwater runoff and settling up pollutants, like walking paths and park benches and all those surface amenities that have absolutely nothing to do with the drainage project. So if we could find out what the costs are just for those, so we can see what kind of additional money is being thrown at this thing that has nothing to do with stormwater runoff. And lastly, I wanted to make sure that Mr. Betts presented everyone with the details of my appeal that he asked me to send over. He said he'd received it, and I just wanted to confirm that those got shared. That's all.
Thank you. Next up is Loretta Stanaway.
Hello. I'm talking tonight about two things, and they're kind of interconnected. One is the Kmart rezoning. I assume you're hearing me okay?
Yes, Loretta.
Okay. I don't support the Kmart rezoning. You've heard me say that before. And another concern that's risen in my mind at least recently is that maybe part of the push for this is that it wouldn't qualify under the new form-based code if that was implemented. So that may explain some of the rush on the part of the developer to try and get this thing approved. Second is the form-based code, and I am firmly against that. And one of the major reasons I'm against it is because I know that not enough of the public has any awareness of this coming down the pike, and I can illustrate that very easily with a conversation I had Friday with a small business owner who is planning extensive investment in expanding and renovating an existing long-term business here in Lansing. He has been meeting with architects and planners and code compliance, and he had absolutely no idea that this form-based possibility was coming down the pike. The changes he proposes to make in his invested project would not be permitted under form-based if he didn't get it done in time to be grandfathered in. And he was completely in the dark. No one from code or planning or Eric Schertzing, who he's been meeting with, had given him any clue about this, which could jeopardize his entire project, not to mention the expenditures he's already made to date for architecture and engineering and other fees and so forth. So I have other problems with form-based, which I'll discuss in the public comment during the committee or the council meeting. But for now, my overriding concern is that the public just is too unaware of this. They have no clue what's coming. They have no clue how it would impact their neighborhoods, their property values, their private properties, and many, many, many small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. And we had someone, but they lowered their hand, it looks like.
Can I, I see Councilmember Spitzley is here, can I?
Yes, yes, Councilmember Spitzley did arrive about three minutes ago.
Okay. I just need to know where she's coming from.
Oh, Councilmember Spitzley, please.
Apologize, Tricia Spitzley remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Mr. Sharkey, Joel Sharkey, you had your hand up, but you don't any longer. If you do wish to speak, please raise your hand. If not, we're gonna move on. Okay, thank you. And I will address the questions from Mr. Fisher during the item, not right now, but when we get to it on the agenda, just so everyone's clear. And next up, we have our COVID policy update from Deputy Mayor Nick Tate from the administration. Mr. Tate, are you here? He was texting me about being here, so I don't know where he is.
I ordered him to panelist.
Oh, they are. Major Tate, you're up.
Yeah, I apologize about when you clicked my name here.
So let me just set the stage on this too for you, Deputy Mayor Tate. We had, we're obviously taking a look at extending the COVID-19 state of emergency for the city through the new year, at least through the first council meeting in 2021 to align with the administration's plan to keep the buildings closed for the city. In that process, though, we'd had some conversations around this table about how COVID has specifically affected City of Lansing employees and the folks that work for the city and do the city's work. So to that end, we were hoping to get an update from you kind of about what the policies were for staff and and how that all worked and how it was working in the city. You know, we read about, you know, if OSU football players testing positive, but we don't hear a lot about the City of Lansing and how that, how things are working out for our staff. So that's where this conversation, the impetus for this conversation came from three weeks ago when we met last as a council. So thank you for being here, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I would, I would just say generally speaking, in terms of the policies, as you've noted, President Spatafor, we've really made a push to try and limit as much as humanly possible and in accordance with state orders to not have folks in the office. I think that's been fairly successful in terms of limiting spread when we do get it. You know, like anywhere else in the country and certainly in the county, we are having positives within the city. But generally speaking, we have, you know, limited positives and we're able to snuff it out. Back in June, on the 23rd, we issued a return to work plan. Within that plan itself, there are certain policies that have to do with promoting mobile work, making sure that when employees do come in that they're screened appropriately. That's temperature and questions in accordance with Ingham County Health Department guidelines. And when someone is sick, that we appropriately make sure that we have the information we needed, at least at that time, to pass along that information to county health departments. That is changed a little bit, which I'll speak on briefly. And now, because of the changes with the county health departments, that if we have to do contact tracing internally, that we can. I would, I would humbly say that that's not something that we're happy to be doing, but quite frankly, that's the situation that we're in now with the amount of community spread that we have. I think that a primary concern of council, and I can be corrected, I'd be happy to be so, is the reporting structure in terms of what happens whenever there is a COVID positive. So at this time, I'd like to briefly walk through that. Let's see here, I'm trying to share my screen here, but it looks like.
Go for it now, Nick.
Perfect.
While we're waiting on that, looks like Councilmember Wood has a question. So Councilmember Wood will come to you, and then we'll move on to the presentation.
I can wait until he's done with that, but I do have a series of questions when, when he's done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me try this again. Is that working, if I may ask?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So specifically wanted, what I wanted to discuss was the internal COVID reporting process here within the city as established by the return to work plan. Back in, on the 23rd of June, we set up a process which at that time, we believe would cover many of the necessary communications that would have to take place in the event of a COVID positive. But quite frankly, like anything else, as time has gone on, we've learned, we've adjusted, we've made mistakes. And I think right now, we're at a place where we're fairly comfortable in terms of making the necessary contacts when, well, it's no longer if, when a COVID positive occurs. We originally began notifying, making sure the notification went to Chief William Englerter, who was the emergency operations chief, as well as Linda Sanchez-Gazella. The initial thought for that was, at the time we were, we established this, communication to Ingham County Health Department, specifically Linda Vale, was pushed through William Englerter. And then Linda, of course, had to make sure that notifications went out to employees if and when, or I should say when, those COVID positives occurred. But as I said, as time went on, we realized that we had to make some adjustments. So William is still in, in charge of making sure that when we have a COVID positive, if more information is needed from Ingham County Health Department or even our federal partners, that William can provide that information. He CC'd on all emails, and I should say, whenever a positive happens, an email is sent to the five individuals that you see here. But in terms of pushing information to our governmental partners, that's William Englerter's role. Linda Sanchez-Gazella, our Human Resources Department drafts a notification to departments in which the COVID positive occurred. One area of consternation, which quite honestly is understandable, is that we do not include the names of the COVID positive whenever that notification goes out. We list the last date that the individual was in and the department in which the individual worked. We arrived at this particular process through some trial and error. When we had our first, second COVID positives, we were notifying, quite frankly, like entire floors, but in speaking with the Ingham County Health Department, they noted rightly so. I think in accordance with the CDC guidelines, you just have to make sure that you cover the folks that may have had close contact. And I think as all council knows, the definition of close contact changes, has changed frequently. I understand it may change again here in the next seven to 10 days, but if that happens, we'll adjust. Kathy Woodman, who's been just a phenomenal resource with this COVID, even though it's a difficult time period, she also communicates with the health department, especially when it came to contact tracing. She would compile all the information that they would need, any of the health departments would need in order to push along that information to them so they can start the contact tracing process. In addition, for occupational health, especially with our first responders, she coordinates any sort of information or testing, even a return if necessary, or a return when necessary for our fire and police. At times, occupational health also helps out with, with non-first responder questions, which is certainly appreciated. My role here is just to make sure that notification goes out to the employees, that the coordination pieces occur with our governmental partners when, when when necessary. And then Andy Kilpatrick, as a public service director, makes sure to disinfect work areas as needed. I would say what you probably don't see here is that our employees have really taken it upon themselves to be proactive in a lot of ways. Even though we may not list a name per se, there's been multiple instances in which employees have become sick and taken it upon themselves to make sure that their staff, well, not only their staff, but their coworkers are okay too. So while it's not a, it's not a piece that you see listed here, it's a very important piece that I think has that we as a city have benefited from, and I think it's kept people safer, just that proactive approach that a lot of our employees are taking. And then finally, some of the challenges that I see in terms of the COVID positive and the report just immunity spread, I think as this council is probably aware, there was a publication that came out from Ingham County Health Department just recently, that they're going to only do contact tracing for, quote, I think, high-risk cases. So that has pushed some of that burden back on us to make sure that if we have, when we have that COVID positive, that we not only notify the employees in that department, but if need be, that we ask them to isolate or quarantine. The nice thing thus far has been that even though Ingham County Health Department has been inundated with, with COVID positives, if we ever have a question in terms of, hey, do you think that this is close contact? Do you think this person should quarantine? They've been, they've been phenomenally responsive, and so we really appreciate that. Second piece, I think speaks for itself. I mean, you know, folks are kind of tired of hearing a COVID, and it's hard sometimes to make sure that we're keeping up with all our guidelines that we need. The third piece is, and I just spoke about this with Kathy today, it's really, it's interesting to see how variable that incubation period may be. There've been cases where we've had employees that were out and symptomatic, and they go get tested, maybe, you know, day one or day two of the symptoms were negative, but they stay out longer, and day four or five, they come back positive. Certainly not a health expert, but that's why we were allowing Ingham County Health Department, at times occupational health, to determine when an employee can come back, but that's been a challenge. And then finally, as I think this council is fully aware, there's been a wild fluctuation fluctuation in terms of how long it takes to get a test result back. Just today, when I spoke with Kathy, I understand that for a lot of our tests, it's taking six days. And, you know, just parroting a lot of the information that's put out by the public health experts, sometimes that's too long because six days means that this individual, although probably well intentioned, may have come into contact with other folks in the community or potentially other folks at the workplace, especially if they're asymptomatic. That's another concern that I certainly have. So that's just kind of a brief overview in terms of what happens whenever we have a COVID positive in the city. With that, subject any questions? President Spatafor, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and stop that, and it looks like we do have questions from Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Nick, my concern is if we have employees that have family members that have tested positive, are they required to report that to you or to their supervisor? That's my first question.
So generally speaking, whenever a family member, which seemingly by definition can be close contact, they receive a quarantine order through the county in which they, they live in. Now, that, that has been the historical practice up to this point. One, one question that, that I probably cannot answer at this time, which I think is a logical follow-up, is now with this high, the high-risk contact, now that, now that contact tracing is only limited to high risk, what does that mean for our employees when, when they get sick? And the practice thus far has been that whether it's at City Hall, in a City Hall, we use what's called the My Symptoms app in which you need to actually check that you don't have any symptoms, et cetera, et cetera. Or in our offsite locations such as public service, such as fire and police, that if an individual does have, if an individual does have symptoms or, to your point, are in close contact with someone that does have symptoms, that at a minimum, that they're screened through occupational health. And at times, if it's not a first responder, our supervisors will reach out to Kathy, and we may reach out to Ingham County Health Department. So historically, yes, that has been the case, but I think that there's going to be some, some need to kind of tighten down on that as we move forward.
Well, that's one thing I would highly recommend, and that is because we do know that there are people that are asymptomatic. They could have gotten it from a close family member or relative and, and, and not show any symptoms and be there. And I, I'm not sure in your information that you provided, I didn't see anything about required testing. You know, is that part of it? Are you, are you having those employees go get tested? Do they have to then show a negative test before they come back? Are they tested, you know, again, five to 10 days after that to make sure that they are still negative? Do you have any answers to any of those questions?
I do, I do, and I'll try and hit as many of them as I can. As far as the testing being required to come back, we have not done that, and that's based on the express guidance from the Ingham County Health Department. When this began, and even more relevant, you know, in the last probably 10 to 14 days, because the testing numbers have gone up and because the amount of crime that it takes to get a negative test back, the guidance we've received is do not require a negative test to come back, but make sure that that individual quarantines for 14 days if you have any, any sort of concerns. So, so it was something that we, we've discussed throughout this entire process, but based on the, the lack of testing, unfortunately, and limited resources, we have not required a negative test to come back.
I guess I'm concerned about that as, as an employer myself. I know that is a requirement that, that we have for having people come back in, in our office, and, you know, it's an error on, on being cautious than it is on, on anything else. And whether we're talking police or fire, whether we're talking public service, you know, there is contact out there with other people. You know, we are a service group. It's one thing to even have COVID and have very few symptoms and being sitting, sitting at home behind a computer desk, you know, in your home and, and dealing with that versus the fact that you're, you have the potential out there to, to be infecting other people. So that, that is a concern. When you talked about the disinfecting, let's just use an example. We, we have someone who is part of O and M that's picking up our, our trash. We find out that the person is tested positive or has symptoms of COVID. Are you then sterilizing all the trucks? You know, what, what is happening with that?
It's a very good question, and I appreciate the fact that you used an example that, that would implicate fleet vehicles. And if I could give example, whenever we have a, an issue with a individual that may have been in a cruiser, especially, that, that vehicle is disinfected, and it's not put back in service until the disinfection occurs. As far as a trash vehicle goes, I would have to look into that because I think it's a little bit different, only in the sense that you have assuming, well, I guess it's twofold. There's really two things to look at, I think. There's the surfaces that the infected individual may have touched, and then there's the internal.
Well, the seat, the the shifter, the, the gauge to compress the trash.
Yep. No, I agree with you, Councilmember Wood, and I do know that we've got electrostatic cleaning that does occur out in the cabin. So I think the cabins of the vehicles in which the infected individuals occur. So if we're speaking about the areas in which our employees are in, yes, I'm confident that cleaning occurs. But I also can't tell you that it's, you know, if we have a trash vehicle, that the exterior of it is clean, but, but I can certainly appreciate your concern about the interior parts that the individuals would be in and, and areas that are touched.
I think those are extremely important. I get the fact that they might be in a break room, but their offices, that is that vehicle, just like it is for police and fire. I mean, that office is that, that vehicle. And if I'm done with my shift and we're still picking up trash and, and somebody else, you know, has to finish up that route because we're dealing with yard waste and recycling that hasn't gotten picked up because we're a day behind, you, you know, you've got other people out there that, that have the potential of being contaminated with that. Having said that, getting back to City Hall, and I realize that the guidelines right now are talking about at least 15 minutes with close proximity of someone who, who has COVID. And, but what are we doing on the surfaces of elevators and, and things like that? So that, you know, how often are we cleaning those? You know, what's happening with that?
Yes, Councilmember Wood, I know that the, the surfaces, what's, what's I think frequently referred to as the high-traffic surfaces are cleaned, you know, at least every one or two days. I hesitate to say every day, but I feel pretty confident about that, especially like the elevator buttons, things of that nature. And I would also say that, you know, because we're getting COVID positives in City Hall, when it does happen on a particular floor that electrostatic cleaning does occur, that's part of that process that the notification process. the notification process that happens whenever we do have a, a positive. I, I know that, you know, at times when I come in, um, you know, the, 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 um, the door wells or, or I should say the handles of the doors are wet, um, the, uh, door knobs are wet. So I feel fairly confident that that's occurring. Um, I, I would say, and I, and I appreciate you bringing all these, uh, points out to light that we also instituted a process because of some of the concerns that we've received from the employees. And, and to some certain extent, the public, that if an employee doesn't think that something's occurring, that they can reach out to Kathy Woodman and Kathy Woodman will anonymously, uh, make sure that their concerns are addressed. So I did, I did want to put that out there as, as a, as another path that the employees can take if they think that something isn't right or that we could do more.
How do you publicize that to the employees?
Originally, we did it through, and to be honest, this was a, uh, an idea from one of our union partners. So, um, the, originally we put it out through, uh, union channels, but I'd be happy to put a blast out on the hub if folks feel like they don't have that information. I can, I can say that a lot of employees, rightly so, uh, have availed them of that particular course of action. But, um, be happy to put that out more broadly and make sure that everybody knows. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a valid concern.
I think it would be important to make sure that you're, you know, putting that information out there on a, on a regular basis. And, uh, as much as I appreciate the hub, how many UAW employees have access to a computer?
No, I think you're right.
The answer, y- you know that, you know, that, that many of them don't. So it's not like they're sitting at, yeah, so.
No, you're right. And that's why I say you're right, Councilmember Wood. We can, we can definitely, and we will make sure that those employees that don't have computer access know that they can reach out to Kathy Woodman and, uh, voice those concerns if they have them.
Um, I, I'm done with my questions at this time, President Spatafor.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Wood. Uh, up next is Councilmembers Fitzley and Brandon. Did you drop off? Councilmember Fitzley, you're up.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Um, I have a couple of questions as well. Nick, how many COVID positives have we had, um, in our city government employees?
Boy, um, I would, I mean, if you want a total number, I can add them up. We're kind of, we're kind of, uh, looking at it as a weekly guideline. I can tell you today, uh, we have six confirmed positives today, but if you want that, I'd be happy to provide that.
Well, I, I'm just, I was, I'm just curious as to, you know, that I'm just curious how many of our, our City of Lansing employees have tested positive? Um, do we regularly test essential workers and our first responders?
You mean as, as like a course of pr- practice, just if you come in?
As a course of practice, do we, do we, have they received any testing? Um, and, you know, and is there a policy to test our essential workers and our first responders?
No, no, not proactively, no.
Okay. Um, so, uh, you talked about, um, you know, exposure. So there, there is no policy for, for quarantining city staff in the event. Oh, you talked about how it takes six days for a test result to get back roughly. So is, there is no written policy or policy from HR that our staff should be quarantined until they get their test results back?
CDC guidelines is generally what we're following. Um, the difficulty with that is a change, uh, frequently.
Oh, yeah. I, I, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there a city policy that talks about quarantining our staff? A, or a staff member in the event of an exposure?
No, we follow the CDC guideline.
Is there, is there, you talked about the, um, cleaning and, um, the cleaning of, of surfaces and stuff in City Hall. That's a consistent written policy that every, everybody in our public services and our maintenance staff and our department folks know about. It's, it's a consistent policy that they wipe down the elevators, you know, two times, you know, three times a day or, you know, every three hours. Do we, do we have something like that where there's certainty so that somebody who comes on knows exactly, um, that it was wiped down an hour and a half ago, so they don't have to wipe it down for another hour? Or how, how do people, how do you go about making sure that the surfaces have been touched on a consistent basis?
So, um, generally in terms of regular cleaning, uh, that's done by just me touching base with, with Andy Kilpatrick. I, I frequently, uh, you know, interact with him in terms of regular cleaning, uh, especially as it, as it relates to City Hall and public service. I, I would say that for the Fire Department, um, and I think of a lesser extent, the Police Department, they're also doing their own cleaning. But if you're in, you know, please correct me if I'm not answering your question. If you're looking for, you know, set, set dates, times that you absolutely know that the cleaning occurred, whether that's in our policy, it's not. It does speak to cleaning, but in terms of regular intervals, it does not speak to that.
Okay. And then finally, uh, my final question is, do we have a policy or a timeline? For when we open City Hall, either partially or totally?
Wow. Um, great question. And, um, I, w- we don't, we don't right now. I mean, right now, we're, we're, we're watching, um, you know, what the state does, um, obviously what the federal government does. The, the best guidance I can give you at this point is that City Hall, um, and, and other public-facing, uh, buildings won't open before January 11th.
Okay. Thank you, uh, President Spatafor.
No problem. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Nick, for being here today. I, I have, uh, one question in particular. Uh, in the Baker Street arrest video and also reported about Kyle Kaminsky earlier in this year, police officers have been seen, uh, doing their duties without wearing masks. Our policy, uh, to punish officers who are not following the mask mandate, uh, in the county. I, I, I'm interested in this question for two reasons. The first is because we're going to be acting on an ordinance today, tonight, that, uh, would make not wearing a mask a misdemeanor. And then on the other hand, I want to make sure that when our police are interacting, especially in black and brown neighborhoods, that they are being especially careful in wearing their masks.
So, excuse me, I know guidance has been put out to the Police Department in particular that they should wear a mask. I'm not sure if there's a written policy, uh, that's, that's spelt that out. But I will look into that tonight and try and funnel that back, uh, to council.
Okay. Thank you, Nick, and thank you, President Spatafor, for giving me the time.
Of course. Right. Are there other questions from Deputy Mayor Tate? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time this evening. We will move on to our quarterly budget report and vacancy factor report. Um, I think the first up is going to be Budget Director, uh, Bauer. Did I get the name right? Hold on. Jake Brower, there you are.
Hello, Budget Director Jake Brower at your service.
I always want to say Brewer because of Eric Brewer.
Uh, yeah. Yep. Well, hopefully you'll have, uh, when we talk about the vacancy, uh, report coming up, you'll be able to, uh, discuss. I know the internal audit position has been open and, uh, hopefully you have some qualified candidates. I, uh, personally pushed one person into applying, so I'm rooting for them silently in the background. Uh, but anyways, we'll start with the, um, quarterly, uh, budget to actuals report. I will share my screen if I have the permissions to do so.
Good.
Excellent. Did I get the right document?
Uh, revenue summary?
Yes.
Yep.
Now scroll up to the top here. And so the structure of this report should look relatively familiar. And so there's three pages of narrative summary at the front, uh, which you may have had the opportunity to read in advance, followed by revenue detail summary, where we break out, uh, the individual revenues, uh, within the adopted budget, uh, just any amendments, which is pretty much exactly the same as the adopted, uh, and September 31, uh, actuals year to date. And so, uh, after the revenue summary, we have, uh, expenditures summarized by the departmental level. Rolling down, we have it, uh, summarized by budget appropriation detail. And then lastly, uh, taking out internal service charges such as retirement and IT charges, uh, which presents a more, uh, specific view of, uh, out of the attorney's office, uh, cost, for example, how much is actually going to the attorney's office versus retirement information technology?
And Jake, before we move on, just folks, this is in your packet in case you're looking, if you're squinting at the screen, it is in your packet.
Yeah, and we should have submitted that to you at the end of, uh, I believe.
Yep, no, it made it into the packet, so I just want to let folks know.
Excellent. And so, uh, looking at the general overview of our, uh, fiscal year budget adoption. So we budgeted to end fiscal year 2020 with about 6.8 million in general fund reserves. This would be down from about 10 million. Uh, for fiscal year 21, we are budgeting about 132 million in revenues, 136 million in expenditures, and an ending fund balance of 2.2 million, which is, uh, low. Looking over our, uh, adopted budget, you'll see this breakdown of expenditures, uh, very glaring. In this, uh, summary is retirement, uh, which is also categorized as fixed costs. This includes employee pension, healthcare, workers' comp, uh, and miscellaneous benefits, which are a fairly small fraction of that. Going down, you'll notice that Police Department is the next largest section of the pie, followed by the Fire Department, general governmental, uh, departments, which have been aggregated, Public Works, Community Development, Departments, Recreation and Culture, then IT charges, capital fund transfers, that service. Any questions at this stage?
Any questions right now or? Jake, we'll probably get, let you through the whole thing and then come back just to, because I can't see everybody.
Sounds exciting. Let's get past the text of the narrative summary here, which you have the opportunity to read, but feel free to call me back on that. Uh, looking at the revenue summary year to date, property taxes were received at the very beginning of the year. And so, um, right now they're slightly ahead of our budget, but that is fairly normal. Uh, based on, uh, previous years, those will be adjusted down as we account for various factors, TIPA revenues, uh, being separated and so forth. Going down from there, we have income tax, where property tax is fairly certain, fairly, uh, set at the beginning of the year. Our income taxes are more volatile, uh, which is something we've mentioned to you on, uh, multiple occasions and is, uh, an area that we're very cautious about when we're projecting the upcoming year's budget. And so as you notice, when we have our adopted budget, amended budget, the year-to-date, uh, the percent year-to-date, we also have a three-year average for these revenues. So where were we for the three previous years relative to where we budgeted? Uh, right now, we're slightly below that, but fairly within the margin of error. Uh, income tax is an area that probably keeps me up at night more than any of the other factors. And it is a, one of our largest revenue sources as far as the budget goes. Moving away from volatility, we have our, um, contract with the Board of Water and Light for the return on equity payment. And this is, this has been negotiated this year for a fixed rate of 25 million. We'll receive half of that in December and the other half in June. And so, uh, we shouldn't receive any surprises there. State revenues are the next largest portion of the budget. As of September 30, we have not received any, most of the state revenues. Uh, those first appear in October, uh, in December. So with the next quarterly report, you'll start to see some action on those items. Moving down to, uh, charges for services, we're actually ahead here. We, uh, cut the budget fairly, fairly severely as far as our expectations here is due to COVID. So far, year-to-date, we're, uh, on track and meeting our expectations. Looking at the first revenue sources discussed so far, this would account for about 90% of our revenues as we go into fines and forfeitures, licenses and permits, uh, and the other revenues. I can go into detail on those, but they are, uh, increasingly small portions of the budget. And less exciting for our conversation. Lastly, moving on to expenditure summary, uh, I've presented this in three different views in the report, uh, which you're, uh, feel free to call me towards any, uh, section of that for discussion. Overall, as a bottom line, you'll note that departments are, uh, in line with where we expect as far as a, uh, September 30 target. And where in revenues, this was a three-year average of it, uh, revenues to date. Uh, the target here is a, um, allocation of, uh, expenditures according to payroll timing, uh, specific contracts. I have a, um, red, regular schedule and then, uh, standard expenditures, which are, uh, portioned equally across the fiscal year. So, uh, everything appears to be on track. Uh, human service agency support, that's a 1.25% of revenues, uh, is slightly ahead, but that's just a matter of timing. Uh, with our contracts, uh, being, uh, assembled earlier than we expected for this year and, uh, doing a good job and getting that money out to organizations that need it. Overall, uh, while our budget is, uh, we hope that it is conservative, it is fairly serious as we project to go down from 6.8 million, about 5% fund balance to 2.2 million, about 1.6%. Uh, if there is any questions you have on, uh, any of these, uh, information so far, that pretty much summarizes what I have to say for the budget report.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Brower, very much. Um, Miss Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you-
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Betts, for, uh, Mr. Brower, we're probably good, good to keep it up so we can, uh, look at the questions. So I will, I will end the share, look at the data and the shares, um, this time. So sorry about interrupting Councilmember Betts. Go ahead.
No worries. I was just giving platitudes for everybody for being here as I usually do. Thank you for being here for really, I mean, I, I do mean it every time because I know this is after hours and I appreciate it. Um, have the, um, the audit, uh, I, I don't know what to call them. Last week, we were sent, um, audit findings from HRCS. Apparently we had sent them responses and then they came back and said that, uh, the, some of our fines were still, uh, standing as of when, when they sent the letter. I'm wondering if those have already been budgeted for, or if those are going to come out of general fund balance. Thank you.
Yeah, those, those have not been budgeted for, they will come out of general fund balance. Uh, we're involved in a process of, uh, conversation with, uh, or housing and urban development, uh, in order to see if we can get those fines reduced. And I'm not particularly active in that process, so I can't, um, unfortunately give you too many details. But we're hoping to get, uh, those fines reduced as much as possible. But, uh, unfortunately, there is, we will have to pay some of that money back and that will have a negative impact on our fund balance.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess I, I can hold off any questions on, on anything else because you don't know the details. So thank, thank you for answering for me. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. In the past, when we have dealt with, um, a decline in revenues and the expenditures, exceeding what our proposed revenues were going to be, we did a moratorium on spending. Has the administration, is there any talk, um, about that? Or, um, the departments and asking them to hold off on any unnecessary spending, um, at, at this time?
While we've not implemented a, um, hard and fast rule about reducing spending, you'll notice that a lot of departments are already thinking on that track. So they're already, uh, controlling expenditures and keeping them down. I've had, uh, department directors reach out to me and say, uh, as we prepare for the fiscal year 22 budget, um, is there any percentage that you're expecting us to cut our budgets by? And so far, we're telling them, uh, status quo. As far as personnel expenditures, the, uh, administration has implemented a hiring freeze and maintains that hiring freeze. Uh, you'll see the effects of that in our vacancy report. And so that is one area that we're controlling our expend- And so that is one area that we're controlling our expenditures and trying to keep the city operating away while still maintaining our core services.
Well, one of the things I think that the administration should be looking at, and that is a freeze on expenditures and whether it's, and again, the fact that we don't have people in offices using supplies, there's a number of things out there. I'd like a list of all the contracts that we currently have out there, because are, are there contracts that we have that we could do away with at, at this particular time or negotiate into reduced costs? So I'd like a list of those, if you could prepare those. I know one of the things that Ms. Keeler had been working on as treasurer was working with the state and looking at their income tax rolls to be able to coordinate those with the cities to make sure that we were receiving all the income tax payments. Can you tell me where that is at this particular time?
Yes, and I'd like to start to say, like, I believe that's an excellent suggestion about the freeze on expenditures and we've actually gotten started on the putting together a list of contracts. And so that's something we're hoping to develop and implement controls so that we can be more aggressive and timely in issuing RFPs and being good stewards of the city money. In regard to the project of Ms. Keeler's regarding the income tax rules, I know that's something that she has spoken to with the current treasurer and that they are working together in order to implement that straight away is that we're looking to shake down every money tree we can in order to keep the city running.
But you don't know where that is at this point, is what you're saying.
My understanding is it has been, or it has or is or will be implemented. You'd have to speak to the treasurer as to the specific operations of that.
Um, I, I found it a little astounding that you said that department heads have reached out to you and you have talked about a status quo budget. We don't have more money in the reserves to meet a status quo budget if it, if we're looking at the same revenues coming in that we are now.
Yes, and to that point, the departments have been instructed to submit their budget documents by this. Is it this Friday? Yes, this Friday, December 4. And so it is our intent that those numbers will be a baseline for us as we develop the, go through the budget process. And so as we get these initial figures back from departments and then implement some of the the program costings that we had hoped to implement in previous years, we find ourselves ahead of where we were last year. And so that we're hoping to do a more nuanced approach rather than simply 10% across the board. And we'll, we'll do what we have to in order to present you with a balanced budget for next year. But we are going to try and do that in as nuanced and data-driven way as we possibly can.
Has there been any consideration to the tax tribunal and the fact that because of so many dealings with retail and office space, that there might be more tax tribunal cases? At, you know, where we would be having to pay back money?
Yes, we've, we've actually received a list of tax tribunal cases from the assessor and there is, there are more cases this year than in previous years. And so that's an area that we're estimating the worst possible impact that could occur to our property tax revenues and taking that into consideration. We've also received the, our expected multiplier for property tax revenues, which is expected to be pretty flat going into next year.
And looking at the income tax, have you done an analysis on those that were paying half a percent that are working from home now and the loss that we could see because of that?
Yeah. And so looking at residents versus non-residents, the total amount of property or income taxes paid by non-residents was about 20% of our income tax revenues for last year, based on preliminary figures that I got a few months ago. So that might be updated and more finely detailed. And so we're looking at possible outcomes in which all income tax revenues for non-residents are completely taken off the board due to work from home. As we understand, that's, that won't be the case. There are individuals who are still working, whether full-time or part-time, as non-residents commuting into the city of Lansing. And so, but we're hoping to budget that conservatively and we're working very closely between ourselves, the Treasury Department and the Chief Strategy Officer, Ms. Keeler, in order to make sure that we have a clear revenue consensus as we go into the budget season.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your question.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I will second that astonishment that we're telling our departments to go with the status quo as we're coming up to budget. Are, are we projecting a deficit for 2021?
Oh, well, let me pull up, we've just submitted our CVTRS report, which includes a general fund projection. And so we have several different scenarios that we're looking at. Several things that we have in our favor is that in particular, we have the, we have confirmed that the 2.5 million in ACA fines and penalties has been taken off our books. And so that will be a positive impact to our fund balance. Other factors that will.
Okay. And that's a good, because I have a question about that. So since you, since you mentioned it, so that was the, those were the fines for lack of reporting or whatever from the previous budget director. You said 2.5 million. I thought it was significantly more. And I thought that we moved more than $2.5 million out of our fund balance to address the anticipated penalties. And so did we have to pay anything or what are, and so, because I thought it was more than $2.5 million that we took out of our fund balance.
I think I know what you're talking about here. So there, there's a lot of numbers that kind of float around here. So as far as the ACA penalties, that was the 2.5 billion that we're pretty familiar with. There is also a sewer lawsuit that we intended to pay from the sewer fund, but got spent from the general fund in fiscal year 19. And so for the 20 fiscal year, we transferred that money back in the year-end budget into the general fund to bolster our reserves. And then on top of both of those, there was the sale of the townsend ramp, which was the revenues with which went into the parking fund. And then last year, we transferred that into the general fund.
Yeah, I'm familiar with all those numbers. So my original question was, didn't we take more money out of our fund balance than, did we take more than $2.5 million out of our fund balance in anticipation of paying penalties as a result of failure to report from our previous budget director? That was my question.
No, just the 2.5 million.
Okay. And has that been moved back to our fund balance?
That will move, that will move back in this current fiscal year.
Okay. Um, have we, do we have projected savings for our staff working at home? That we, have we realized savings in the city government for staff working at home?
Oh, it depends on which sense you mean. In terms of activity, we, I would say that a lot of the savings from working at home have been spent in other costs, such as connecting employees to technology that allows them to work from home, purchasing laptops, necessary equipment, getting VPN access, Zoom licenses. And so we, I would say we've received more savings from services that have been put on pause, such as recreational services or hiring freeze than we have from working on home specifically.
Right. And then my last question is, it's, it's kind of a two-part, since you brought it up, you know, how many employees have we hired since we had a hiring freeze? That's the first one. The second one is, so to me, it would seem like if you're going to budget or anticipating budget, that you would give the departments something to shoot for. And so a freeze on equipment or a freeze on purchasing, since folks aren't in our buildings, you know, instead of the status quo, and then for whatever reason, you know, it's chopped. You know, it's, it's addressed then would seem to be, would be my suggestion. That way there's certainty. They know they're looking at a 5% reduction or a 10% reduction, but that's, you guys do, you, you guys do what you need to do. But I would be interested in the number of people we've hired. You know, since we've done the hiring freeze.
Yeah, I will check into the number of employees hired. I don't have a number off the top of my head. But I do know that there have been exceptions to the hiring freeze based on necessary positions in order to continue operations.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess this question is for Jake and possibly the city attorney as well. My question is just generally speaking, not talking about any specific pending litigation, but if the city becomes civilly liable for damages, where does the money come from, I guess? And in the case that the insurer doesn't cover it, where does the money come from? Thank you.
Yeah, so this might be one where I defer slightly to the city attorney. I know general lawsuit costs, we have a line item in our budget. If you look into your own budget, there's, I think it's 748000 insurance and bonds. And so those costs are allocated out to departments. As far as the specific costs related to insurance claims, that'd be a more detailed.
Your city attorney?
So we do have insurance through, you know, different types of insurance, liability insurance, records and officers insurance, and I'm not going to even address workers' comp through the MMRMA, which is a pool of insurance and the liability limits are, they're above, they're north of 5 million, five to seven million, something of that nature. The, the issue is with the deductible. We have constant, we have had a historical deductible, at least for the last five years of a million dollars. And it's still at that point. So to the extent that we settle claims less than a million dollars, they have to come out of the city coffers. And I guess Jake would have to say what, and I think Mr. Spatafor has already mentioned the number of the account, but it's a claims and judgments account. That's why we take litigation very seriously. And exposure and, and any, any actions that the city takes that might put us in jeopardy. We're very diligent in our office about reducing exposure. You know, we have a constant flow of 30 lawsuits, ranging from civil rights violations to claims against the police department, so on and so forth. And so we're, we're just very diligent, but it's the specific question is where would the money come from? And that's a Mr. Brower answer.
Oh, may I follow up? So that sounds like a budgeted line item. I guess if the amount for the year or whatever it is exceeds that, then where does the money come from? Is that the general fund?
It would come across all the, the funds that that line item is included within. So I believe the majority comes from the general fund and then probably about 25% comes from other funds.
I think what Councilmember Jackson is saying is say, we for some reason lost a $100 million lawsuit and our insurance carriers didn't pay for it. Where does the money come from? We just.
Yeah, mostly general fund and then other funds is applicable.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that seems to be, hold on, let me make sure. Seems to be it for questions for Jake. Mr. Woodigan, are you doing the vacancy factor report or is Mr. Brower doing that?
I can continue there.
Okay, Jake answered your question.
All right.
Yeah. So you should have also in the same distribution, received our vacancy factor report for September 30, 2020. You'll notice that the fields here, we have the department, the account key that the vacancy resides, position, ID and description, bargaining unit, FTE, the date the vacancy was set, and an estimate of the amount that the vacancy has saved the city of Lansing. And so the, one of the more important things, not to take away all possible observations from this report is that our city has budgeted about 1.4 million in vacancies for this fiscal year, which is an increase from 700,000 the previous year, with the idea that it would be derived from the hiring freeze and other activities that would cause us to not hire additional staffing. Overall, as we look towards vacancies that are counted against that vacancy factor, we have saved about $355,984 as of September 30, 2020. And so that, if you multiply that by four, that would put us on track to reaching the savings that we budgeted to receive as part of our adopted budget. And so they'll see 43.7 vacancies as of September 30 are attributed to the vacancy factor. And then 50 vacancies that are, go towards other funds that are included in the general fund. Are there any questions at this time?
Yes, looks like Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I appreciate the detail that we have in the vacancy factor. We've worked long and hard to get it to what we were looking for and, and I appreciate that. One of the things, though, I would like to see is I realize that the backside has to do with non-general fund vacancies, which do not count against the vacancy factor. But if you have a non-general fund deficit, then there are monies that are going to, that would have to be transferred over to make up these enterprise fund expenditures. So if we could get a cost, what, a cost out for these individual positions, I would appreciate that.
Okay, I'll try and, I'll introduce that for the next report.
All right, thank you.
All right. That's it. And I'm told by the chair of our personnel committee and our office manager that we may be on our way to removing one of those vacancies as we, we do have several qualified candidates for the internal auditor position that we're considering. So third time's the charm, maybe, right? Like Councilmember Vice President, you're saying?
We certainly are hoping, yes.
Very good. All right. Let's move forward then. Thank you very much, Mr. Brower, Mr. Woodigan, for your time this evening. Mr. Brower, mostly, Mr. Woodigan, for your moral support there for Jake.
You're very welcome. Next time, I'll expect some more questions.
All right, very good. Next up, we're going to hear from, on the, the proposed form-based code, which did pop out of development and planning last week, or a while ago, whenever it was. It's the public here. or a while ago, whenever it was. It's the public hearing is this evening at city council meeting. So we're going to have an overview from the administration and, but I'll tee it up to the chair first of the committee, if Councilmember Spitz, if there's anything you wish to add before we move to Mr. McGrane.
Um, not really. I think that we had a very thorough overview of the form-based code. It's been going on for a while, but I thought that a more in-depth review for all of our council members was, was appropriate. So I'll let Mr. McGrane get to it.
Very good.
Thank you, council members. If I might ask that Andrew Fedewa and Sue Stasiewak could be admitted to this also, as Andy will be doing the bulk of the presentation.
Sure.
And I will be available here for, for follow-up questions. So we do have about three hours worth of presentation, but we'll skim that down to I think something more manageable, as I know time is short tonight. But as soon as Andy joins us, he does have a couple of slides. Thank you for letting us bring this before you to give, again, an overview on something that we've been working on for, for quite some time now. And we're delighted that this did make its way through the first round of committee for the public hearing, which I believe is later tonight, and I imagine this will go back to committee. But we're delighted to again tell you about, you know, how this sort of grew out of the, the new city master plan, which at this point is, is sort of an eight-year-old new city master plan, but really we do see form-based code as the implementing tool for which we can do this. So again, joining me is Sue Stasiewak. Many of you, of course, know Sue. She's just celebrated her 20-year anniversary with the city. So Sue, thank you for your, your long time support with us. And Andy Fedewa, our newest planner, just joined us about a year ago. And of course, in the interim, Bill Risky did retire from our office. We were sad to see him leave, particularly since it was in the first week of pandemic. So one of these days, we will be delighted to invite you all back to his retirement party when we're ever able to have it. Andy, if I might turn things over to you, hopefully you're able to share the slides that you have and begin our presentation.
Yep, absolutely. So thank you, council members, for having us on. Again, we've been itching for this since the spring and we're happy to present to you this afternoon. I'm not sure the best format for everyone, but if you have a question, please feel free to chime in. And again, Sue and Brian are on to help me with any questions if they arise.
Mr. Fedewa will probably hold questions to the end just because of the nature of the, how they look on screen, so.
Sure, absolutely.
And you have slide numbers, so that's useful for helping us to go back.
Yep. So to start, a form-based code is an ordinance that focuses on what the desired look, feel and character of an area should be, instead of just the separation of uses. Right now Lansing now has a traditional zoning ordinance based on those separation of uses and emphasizes land use over building form. In many cases, the current zoning code is nearly 40 years old. A pure form-based zoning code emphasizes the building form primarily, regardless of use. However, as this was being drafted and created, Lansing's form-based code is more of a hybrid code that addresses the, both land use and the building form. And that is so that it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. There are different zonings or different zones that were created to be context-sensitive, whether it's a single-family district, a commercial node, or a downtown adjacent neighborhood. By organizing the code around build-to-lines, number of floors, percentage of built site frontage, and street and building types, there will be more uniform development pattern, rather than the patchwork of different kind of buildings that are focused on just the use. Again, going back, the Lansing's, Lansing's appearance was a major issue in that 2012 comprehensive plan. Lansing residents themselves indicated their preferences for areas that should be preserved, enhanced and transformed. And this form-based code is the primary tool for implementing the design and land use recommendations of that plan. By using this PET map you see, we kind of lay out areas that Lansing residents want preserved. Those are mainly those residential neighborhoods. Areas that should be enhanced, which are mostly industrial areas that will be improved with additional form standards. And those red areas are mostly commercial corridors that can be transformed by a more comprehensive development pattern laid out in the zoning code. An updated draft of the form-based code was recommended for adoption by the planning board after a public meeting, February 4th. That was just to do some updates and a few edits. I know if you're not really in tune to city government, sometimes you don't know what might be going on. But I do want to emphasize that this form-based code has been shown, engaged with all four words. There's been five public hearings at the planning board and the, the planning board has passed it twice, again, most recently in the 2020. And a form of the draft form-based code has been online continuously for five years. So there's nothing that we're trying to sneak by. We love public engagement. We love public input. Some of the form-based code benefits. There are design standards to improve and protect community character. Again, with those setbacks and design standards, there's an opportunity for the missing middle of the housing market, not just single-family or duplexes or large apartments. There are zones for quadplexes, sixplexes and so forth. The zoning code will more adequately protect neighborhood properties than conventional zoning, be that landscaping, screening, or height setbacks. So no building is towering over the building next to it. And the zoning code is easier to understand with better tables and more graphics. The form-based code can speed up development review, again, with having predictable yet flexible standards that are easier to read. There's a chapter for design standards, so developers or architects can reference that easier. And there's a wide array of uses permitted with more emphasis on the building type and just site design. There are also incentives allowing for some flexibility to those building design or site standards. If the, if the applicant provides certain public benefits, such as green design or low-impact design or pedestrian-friendly improvements. So getting into administration. While the form-based code is a total replacement of the current zoning code, aspects of what works will be retained while out-of-date regulations will be replaced by contemporary solutions. And while there's not a one-to-one relationship between the current and proposed districts, residential, commercial and industrial districts largely remain at their current locations. Single-family residential districts remain single-family. This zoning code also gets rid of the J parking and CUP, Community Unit Plan districts, which has in the past been a little messy or confusing for some people. Schools are zoned, or zoned residential adapter reuse, allowing for their continued use as a school, but also to facilitate flexible adaptive reuse in the unfortunate event of a school closure. And then parcels that are under the Public Act of 425 agreements are not covered by this form-based code. And then quickly, this is just the table of contents. Parts three and parts four, the approval administrative parts, mostly stay the same as they currently exist. Those districts, we're going to get into a little later, but right now I'd like to go into general provisions, landscaping and parking. So our general provisions, marijuana is actually governed by a different ordinance, so that's not covered in the form-based code. Home occupations are largely the same as current language. As for the keeping of animals on residential properties, Lansing's not really a farm city. So it prohibits the keeping of wild animals and livestock, but does regulate the keeping of hens to five at the most and adult pet dogs to three. There's a provision in there to give the city some additional controls over authorizing requests for demolition, so that someone's not demolishing their building just to put up non-required parking. Recreational vehicles are covered. It restricts the number of RVs that can be kept at a residential property and regulates where they may be parked or stored. And it has provisions in there to limit the repair of vehicles only to the residence vehicle themselves and limits the work to be done to changing oil, minor tune-up, tire rotation and changing brake pads. Definitely don't want to see any auto repair in our residential neighborhoods. Outdoor seating is covered, which is definitely important, especially this year. Adult businesses, that language stays the same as currently exists. Exterior lighting is covered, so that parking lots are adequately lit, but also regulates that lightstone glare onto neighboring properties. And then there's also provisions for the communication towers, wind turbines and residential antenna that regulates the height replacement allowable number of those kind of structures. There's a chapter on landscaping. Approved landscaping plan is required for all site plan approval projects. This regulates plant species, plant sizes, the spacing of those interior site landscaping. That's not just the parking lot, but there's also parking lot landscaping that's not currently mandated. These were crafted for pedestrian and environmental benefits. These can break up the sea of parking that sometimes we see in our large commercial developments for stormwater retention and to reduce the urban key island effect. There's also some language in there to buffer and screen requirements between adjacent properties, especially between those of different districts. So for instance, residential and industrial. There's a chapter for off-street parking. I've heard some reports that parking is not covered in the form-based code. That's categorically false. This chapter calculates the required parking based on use, but also, excuse me, not just use, but depends on gross floor area, leasable floor area, bench seating, or the number of employees. There are some stipulations in there to limit, or I mean, sorry, reduce the parking requirement, be that lot sharing, available parking in the vicinity, or employer incentives for their employees to use public transit or live in the neighborhood. But these considerations, an applicant has to prove these factors are enough to satisfy peak parking demand. They can't just uniformly or unilaterally decide that. There's also standards for bike parking, again, kind of depending on your use or your floor area. In many cases, at, at the highest would be 30 bicycle parking areas, spots. And to limit excessive parking, the number of parking spaces can only be exceeded by 20% of the minimum. But again, the applicant has to prove that there are factors to warrant such a access. So to get into how the code actually works, one would have to look at the zoning map and the use table that would send them to their applicable zoning district where they can see the intent, allowable uses and review the site layout requirements, such as building massing, building placement, parking configuration and loading areas. But the also, there's also a map that I'll show in a bit that shows the street topography. Again, that kind of can affect some of the standards based on, such as height or setback. And then there's also architectural regulations that touch on the floor area, the window area minimums, building materials, the roof types and pitch. So to get into that a little further, step one, you would check your zoning map. And that would either take you to chapter 1243, 1244, 1245, touching those commercial, residential or special industrial districts. For this example, it kind of looks at, um, Rio Town. This is just a snippet of the master use table that shows the districts there at the top and allowable uses based on that district. Is pretty comprehensive. There are a lot of uses. So for example, this would be MX3 in Rio Town. You go into your chapter, this would show you the intent, the suggested building types, the layout requirements, a lot of images and better tables to make it easier to read. And then you would cross-check that against regulations or cross-check the regulations against the steep street topography. So a lot of that is for the building height or the parking. So front yard parking might be more acceptable in arterial or suburban corridors, but not appropriate in an activity corridor that's a bit more pedestrian-focused. Step four would bring you back to those site layout requirements, your minimum and maximum height. If there is a required step back, again, if a taller building is permissible to a lower, lower height district, there would have to be some kind of step back from the adjacent district. Also touches on the build-to-line, the side and rear setbacks, and where allowable surface parking is. Throughout the code, we try to put parking in the back and not so much in the front. Depending on the district, it's mostly regulated to one or two bays of parking in the front. And then step five is your general architectural standards. This touches on your projections, your finstration, again, the allowable building materials, facade articulation. So if you have, if some developer has a new building that takes up an entire block, there would have to be some kind of setback. So it's not one, not like a huge wall of building. And then that brings us to the district summaries. I'm just going to try to keep this brief. But if I'm going too fast, please let me know. Your suburban, commercial and your mixed-use urban corridors are kind of auto-oriented commercial districts. There are mixtures of uses still encouraged, and especially mixed-use. Mixed-use is encouraged but not required. Again, the, the point is to bring these buildings up to the front, put parking in the back to have a more uniform development pattern. Mixed-use neighborhood center are kind of our smaller neighborhood important intersections, such as Pleasant Grove and Homes. Again, encouraging mixed use and bringing those buildings up to the front. Mixed-use community center are a bit more heavily trafficked commercial intersections, such as Logan Square and Frandor, and allows for a bit more height. Your mixed-use district center are dense urban, mixed-use, pedestrian-focused districts closer to downtown, such as Michigan Avenue, Rio Town and Old Town. And this is where you have a bit more height and the focus is bringing the buildings to the front and parking on the back. Urban Edge is mostly the western edge of downtown. These are context-sensitive to these being residential in nature for the most part, and also a mixture of office uses sprinkled in there. We have an emphasis on retaining the historic nature of those houses and office buildings. And we're also, has a shorter height to be sensitive to the residential nature. Urban Flex is the downtown area bit north or east of downtown across the river. This allows for a greater mix of residential, commercial, industrial and entertainment uses. These are kind of transitional areas from older industrial areas and to a mixture of uses with a warehouse district vibe or lofts, new apartments, that kind of thing. Activity corridors, building should be active with storefront, first-floor uses and one bay of front yard parking is allowed. Downtown Three, Downtown Core is the heart of downtown. These are where you're going to find your highest density, the tall buildings, the most walkable mixed-use area with active storefronts. And in that one, there are no maximum height. For all the industrial, it kind of depends, suburban industrial. It does have a wide array of uses that are allowed, but it kind of is more of a suburban feel with more green belts and more green spaces. General industrial is most generalized and that covers the Grand River GM plant. It has a bit more height, maximum height to it. And then urban industrial is our historic industrial parts of the town. Usually multi-story industrial, not the flat 114 buildings. It allows for a mixture of uses such as office, research, manufacturing, just to be sensitive to, it might be near a residential neighborhood. For an example, Hazel Street area east of Rio Town. And then suburban institutional and urban institutional were created for our, kind of our institutional uses and mind. kind of our institutional uses in mind, obviously, such as government, medical facilities and education. It can support some attached residential, depending on the zone or street type. But the focus is to bring those buildings up to the front, make them attractive and walkable, park in the rear. R1, R2, and R3 are the more suburban and feel residential districts. These are a bit lower in density, bigger lots, in some cases a more rural character that are set back a bit more. But again, we're sensitive to being one or two stories at the minimum or two or two and a half stories at the maximum. R4, R5, and R6 are a bit more urban and feel. These lots are a bit closer together. They're not as wide. And they cover housing development that's a bit more older and closer to the founding of these residential districts in the city. And range from one and a half stories to two stories at a minimum, and then two to two and a half stories at the maximum. Multi-family campus districts were created to cover what are current apartment campus facilities. They're sprinkled throughout the city, but they're mainly a collection of apartment buildings cluttered together. Our MX mixed residential is pretty similar to our R6B where it allows for a variety of housing types and allows for more than just single-family development. These are mostly along the corridors and near downtown. And it's a transition from those single-family detached housings to your duplexes, your quadplexes, or your sixplexes. And again, adaptive reuse are very adaptable or very flexible to allow for the reuse of a building should it close down. But we're also sensitive on the maximum height that has to be equal to the residential district. So no building is towering over anyone's single-family house. That does it for me. We'd love to field any questions. I know there's a lot to that. That's two hundred and eighty-five pages. So there's a lot to cover.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fiedler, for that presentation. There we go. I do see Councilmember Wood has her hand up, so we'll start with Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. I have a few questions, but there are more that I will send you in an email. Andy, so that you can answer them that way. My first question though is, I know when this has been discussed during budget process with council, one of the questions that came up was form-based code that majority of those that have been adopted have been adopted as districts and not the entire city. Has that changed? And what if there are ones that have adopted it for the entire city? Could you give us a list of what those cities are?
Sure. You're seeing a bit more citywide codes. The biggest would be Miami, Florida. I don't have a comprehensive list right in front of me, but you are seeing it a bit more. But again, this is a hybrid code, so it's not just the form. We're trying to be sensitive to the context of Lansing, so there are still uses being regulated.
Oh, do you know of any in the state of Michigan that have been adopted citywide?
I could be wrong, but I believe Grand Rapids is citywide also right now. It started out as district, but I think it is citywide now.
If you could look into that and get us that information, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Have you had any discussion with Michigan Realtors Association?
That would have been a bit before my time since I've only been here a year. Brian or Sue?
Do go ahead.
Yes, I don't know. This was maybe about two or three years ago. We invited many several local realtors, engineers, and developers, builders, you know, folks like Palka Lesby, Harry Hopper, their staff, a lot of civil engineers that prepare a lot of site codes in the city and some realtors. And it was a dinner meeting where we had our consultants present the present the form-based code, and it was fairly well-attended. I would say there was maybe about fifteen people there. Of course, we sent out, you know, maybe a hundred invitations, but we had difficulty getting people to come to this meeting. So we felt that that was successful, getting that number of folks. And they were, gave us very positive feedback. What this does in that shells, it makes good development. It makes the process easier for good development, the kind of development that's backed up by the master plan.
I understand that. So the answer to my question is, you've not made this presentation to the Michigan Realtors Association. Is that correct?
That is correct. Well, yeah, I guess we figured that. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I know that this has, there's been numerous public meetings. I understand that. But I also know that right now we're in the middle of a pandemic. The public that might be engaged in this has a variety of different things that they're dealing with right now. I'm not sure why we would not wait for a little bit to allow the public to have some of the, some more discussion on this. You know, I've been to some of those, those meetings, and it's no different than what you indicated just a few minutes ago, Sue, where you sent out a hundred invitations and fifteen people show up. So, you know, my concern at this particular point is I, you know, having the fact that we're doing things on Zoom, you have people that don't have access to be able to do that, or the ability to do some of those things that so much of what they're concerned about currently right now is putting food on their tables and making sure that they've got a place to stay. And that I'm not necessarily sure that this is something that we should be moving through at this time. Now, that's my own opinion on this. But I will put those other questions together and get them over to Mr. Fiedler and then see if we can get some answers back. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Jackson, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question could go to really anybody and including Councilwoman Wood, possibly, if you have any information. I guess just to summarize what type of opposition there has been to this. I know this has been going on, at least in like procedure and practice or preparation since 2012, I believe. And I guess I just haven't heard much of the opposition. I'm just curious to what it is, if anybody's aware.
Mr. McGraeme, would you like to at least take a stab at that one?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So when we went through the master planning process, gosh, almost ten years ago, I believe is when it was started. I was just involved as a citizen who was interested in that time. But I can tell you, there was lots and lots of public input that went into that. In fact, in the front of the 2012 master plan, you can see the about, I think, two hundred names of folks that were involved in that process, ranging from elected officials to community leaders to, you know, regular citizens who just had an interest in improving their community. So lots and lots of input went into that at the time. Extensive document, actually a wonderful document, and I invite you all to take a fresh look at it. We actually just went through and did an update on it not too long ago. And, you know, we're, it's nice to see a modern plan where we're actually making real strides. You all are making strides to implement the things that were sort of put forth as a community vision. You know, again, we pointed to that the PET, the Preserve Enhanced Transform Map earlier. These were visions of the citizens. These were questions asked to them and sort of things put out to them and then synthesized and sent back that were sort of, you know, again, ideas and visions of the neighborhoods and the community at large. All of that sort of translated into the form-based code tool, which, as was mentioned earlier, it's several hundred pages. So I certainly do encourage you to read it. I think this is actually a very readable tool. But I think a lot of times what we've gotten maybe negative feedback on, I think sometimes emanates from people not, not having had the information. You know, there are, for instance, parking. Parking is not eliminated in this tool. I think, again, based on the district, based on the context, parking rules and regulations change across town. Similarly, for our neighborhoods, you know, this has never been about putting a twenty-story building in the middle of a residential neighborhood. If that's not the context, many of our neighborhoods are ones, you know, again, throughout the city that are less dense, that maybe have four houses per acre or something like that. And we're not looking to change that. And so I think some of maybe the feedback has been sort of a misperception that this is a one-size-fits-all. It's all in his, Andy demonstrated in the different districts. We understand that the city looks different across town, whether you're in, you know, on Michigan Avenue or downtown or in a neighborhood off Cedar or MLK. Things are different throughout town, and I think this is a way of reflecting those unique, unique neighborhoods and encouraging development that fits those in the future.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Jackson?
I suppose. I mean, I heard a few things of opposition, so I'll just take that and listen at the public hearing for anything else.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. Councilmember Jackson, I think some of the issues that I've heard about this is, is one, the question I asked originally, which was how many municipalities have adopted this entirely based versus those that have adopted it in different districts? And the last I knew, there weren't any in Michigan. Now, if there are some that have since then, you know, I'd be glad to take a look at and get some additional information. I think that's, you know, the first part of it. Second is, I don't think there's any council member here that can say that over the years, if we dealt with zoning issues and zoning situations, that the follow-through on those, not that the administration hasn't tried to make sure that people are held to the standard of the zoning area, but to add additional criteria in this, it's going to be one of the questions that has to be answered is the enforcement part of it. We can put as many plans together as we want. We can, you know, they can all look really nice. But if the enforcement part of it isn't something that's out there that we can count on, you know, that, that creates, you know, an expectation from the public that doesn't follow through. So I think that's another question. And that was one of the ones that I was going to ask Mr. Fiedler was the enforcement part of it. Because there are some additional restrictions in this particular code than what there are in the zoning codes. I think we have to understand that. Again, you know, whether people look at different associations or not as being something that's important. The Michigan Realtors Association is selling property and selling houses in our community. I would like to know what their opinion is on this. I think it's important that, you know, that we reach out, we talk to the president of the association, we give them this information and to try to get some feedback from them before making decisions. So those are, those are a couple of the things, Mr. Jackson, that, you know, that I've heard out there that have some concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. I don't see any further hands up. So with that, I will say we do have this up for a public hearing this evening, and then it goes back to committee, of course. So just wanted to make sure that the whole council saw it. Councilmember Spencey, are you trying to say something or? Nope. Okay. I just want to, you know, your chair, so I wanted to make sure you found a way and you had an opportunity. Okay, let us move on, please, to, thank you, Mr. McGraeme, Statute Act, Mr. Fiedler, for your time this evening. Good. Have a good evening. Next up, we are going to discuss an ordinance to amend chapter six oh two, six oh two dot one-one. This is the committee meeting on this, and it is going to council this evening. So let me open it up for, we need a motion to approve it, then we can open it up for discussion. So Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So I would move the ordinance to amend chapter six zero two, section six zero two point one-one to provide for enforcement of local health orders or regulations issued pursuant to the Michigan Public Health Code.
Good. There's been a motion before us. So as you all recall, we do have an emergency ordinance in place that is basically operationalizing this longstanding ordinance that allows for Lansing Police Department to issue civil infractions or misdemeanors related to violations of public health orders. And then they go through the court process, should a citizen, resident, or visitor be wish to appeal that citation. Sets up two different spaces, basically, one for gross disregard, for one disregard for, maybe those aren't the legal terms, so I'll avoid using them, but like really bad violations. And then the other types of violations that could be more civil infraction geared. As was explained to us by the Director of the Department of Health, Linda Vail. She currently, law enforcement currently has the ability to issue misdemeanors related to related to these offenses. And then they go directly to the county health director for basically judge, jury, and not executioner, because it's not that, it's not that severe, but you know, you know, I'm getting at here. So the attempt here was to make the violation of these orders with a little bit more discretion on whether they were misdemeanors or civil infractions, and to instill a bit more due process into the issuance and appeal process. A lot of discussion was had the last time around about is LPD, is law enforcement the right space or agency for these? And in my private conversations with folks involved, I've been convinced that it really is, given that they're responding to them, the calls already. And they have the infrastructure in place to do it. So that's why you won't see an amendment from me today, as we kind of discussed earlier. So that's where we are on this. I'll open it up to discussion, but since I'm, my name's on this, I'll let Mr., our Vice President handle the discussion this evening, if you're okay with that, Mr. Vice President.
Sure. Is there any, there is a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Betts, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. I appreciate it. I guess my one question is, given that the police are allowed to issue misdemeanors for this, are we also going to, on the back end, require officers to wear masks when in public? I understand that we have some guidance associated with this. Nick Tate sent me something a little while ago saying that there is some sort of discipline, but we're talking about police officers giving out misdemeanors for something that they're not following themselves. So I'm wondering if on the back end, if the mayor's office can answer this, if our police officers are actually going to, you know, demonstrate the law themselves, or if we're going to just allow police officers to do this work and not wear masks themselves.
And President Spatafor, is there somebody in here up in the mayor's office that can can speak to that?
Let me look here. I will also say that there is an exception for law enforcement in the state order. That doesn't directly address your question, Councilmember Betts, but there is an exemption for law enforcement actively engaged in a public safety role. But the exemption is where it would seriously interfere with their ability to perform. So I just wanted to point that out. And I don't know, Mr. Tate, you're on still. If you're willing to address that or able to. It's not in the ordinance, Brandon. It's, I'm sorry, Councilmember Betts, to answer directly your question. No?
Nick, are you still with us? And can you speak to that? Okay.
It's okay. I think that it's just a concern that I have and something that we obviously need to be thinking about, especially moving forward, because we can't have one standard for police officers and another standard for the citizens of Lansing. I think that's just, I think that I will support this in the end, but I think that that's something that we should be taking very seriously. Especially, I mean, just the safety of the police officers. If a police officer says, oh, I don't want to wear a mask because, you know, I might be engaged in something. Well, that doesn't mean that they're not going to get COVID. And I don't want to see any of our employees getting sick or any of our employees getting somebody else sick because they were unwilling to follow what is county health orders.
I would also, I hundred percent agree, Councilmember Betts, Mr. Vice President, if I may, and I would suggest too, I know that I don't see the mayor on right now, but he'll probably be on at council, and I would directly ask him that. and I would directly ask him that question if we get this out to council this evening.
All right, thanks so much. We also have, and I'm not sure who raised their hand first, so we'll start with Councilmember Jackson, then we'll move on to Councilwoman Wood.
Thank you, Vice President. So I just have a hard time still trying to figure out, why do we want our police officers, who everybody says is too busy for certain serious things, to have to respond? Or to encourage, by doing this ordinance, it's encouraging, oh, we have this ordinance on the books. If you see something, say something, whatever it is. So then this thing happens after the fact. I remember the first time, or the first conversation, the thought was that the people would call the non-emergency number, which, for those of you know, you might not get a response anytime soon, but I just don't see how do we take officers off of the serious things going on to enforce something that's happened after the fact. Also, like, I don't think that the intent is to get individuals, so to speak, that's what Linda Vale or somebody said, that it's more to get establishments. So if somebody reports, hey, so-and-so restaurant has indoor seating, and there's 20 people in there right now, and none of them wearing masks, I got carryout, I saw them. I mean, the response from 911 should be, well, we have code enforcement for that, and then they can respond or take notes, whatever. It shouldn't be, we're going to put people out there. So I understand the ordinance kind of makes it, you can do more things, but it also, to me, encourages law enforcement intervention. And for all the people who say, why do we pass or do unenforceable things? This is going to be one of them, whenever it comes to be, besides the major establishments that can't move their brick and mortar and can easily be investigated by a code enforcement officer and not our police. So I don't think I'll be.
Councilwoman Wood, if you don't mind, I did see President Spatafor's hand up, and I believe it is to respond to Councilmember Jackson. So with your permission, President Spatafor, go ahead.
Sure, it's, the Councilmember, Vice President Hussein, thank you, and Councilmember Jackson, since you asked a question, I wanted to directly answer it. The reason of why, you know, if law enforcement's too busy, why add this layer? They're already doing this through the public health code. It's just, they're, they must issue misdemeanors if they cite. So this gives them more flexibility, and as I mentioned earlier in the introduction, it takes the complete process, the process entirely out of the health department's hands, and puts it across a more even playing field, allows for more due process, allowing folks to appeal through the court system, rather than directly to Linda Vale, who then can say yes or no, and I'm not, not that she's not a fair person, but that's not a very fair process. So while I hear your, your very legitimate concern about a department that's already doing things that aren't necessarily high priority, adding more to it, they're already doing this. Folks are already reporting, even before the emergency ordinance. But codifying the emergency ordinance as a, as a permanent ordinance would allow more flexibility in how they do that work, rather than just issuing those misdemeanors and then sending them along to the county health department.
Do you have a direct response to that, Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, it is not to be adversarial, but I guess, I just wonder how many of those did Ms. Vale see to her desk? I think it was a handful of them, and that's something the police did a handful of times. But now with this ordinance, it's going to be a lot more, and, you know, I just wonder how much more.
With all due respect, I don't, I don't believe that's the case, Councilmember Jackson. I think they're still going to prioritize it in the same way, but this really is about adding, I think, you know, some measure of equitable ability, fairness, due process as part of the process. So, I mean, at the end of the day, our police officers, and I know you went on right of laws and things of that nature, when calls come in, they have to prioritize based on, right, based on, is the issue violent crime? Is the issue, and so this isn't going to cause, you know, these types of issues to jump those issues essentially in the queue. But again, I think it's about making the process a little bit fairer, fairer, sorry, and then adding kind of that, that check and balance, so to speak. Councilwoman Wood, your hand, I thought I saw Councilwoman Spitzley's, but it looks like it went down. Councilwoman Wood, go ahead.
Thank you. Since the passage of the emergency ordinance, have there been any tickets issued for violations or misdemeanors issued? And I see the city attorney unmuting himself, so I think he's probably getting answered.
I checked this morning, because I somehow anticipated this question. So we have seen nothing through our legal assistant district court coordinator, who handles all of the warrant requests and civil infraction tickets that are prosecuted. And again, this is not anything that's going to the Ingham County Prosecutor, this is a local ordinance. It's either a misdemeanor, if there is a knowing and willful derogation of an order of the health department. And, and so that would follow a process like we normally go through. You analyze a police report, you see if there's intent, specific intent, things of that nature. Civil infractions under this ordinance are issued after there has to be a warning, and there isn't a specific content involved here, and those go through. So we have not, those go through our office also, and then they go to the four, they go to the four courtrooms. One of the four courtrooms. We have not seen anything through our office. I checked with LPD this morning, and they gave me a list of other types of, since COVID, the first emergency order, emergency order of the governor, and they have not issued any citations. That was verified for me this morning, so there has been nothing issued under the emergency ordinance at this point. I also mentioned, answered maybe some of your questions to the chief this morning, if this ordinance passes, that we would, our office would assist LPD in training the officers and what they can and cannot do under this ordinance. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yep, and you anticipated my second question, which was the training.
Fantastic, is there further discussion? Councilwoman Spitzley, no, all right, fantastic. Sorry, Sherry, would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Ordinance carries 7-1.
Grab the gavel back from you there, Mr. Vice President, thank you very much. The next item is the special assessment resolution for the Montgomery Drainage Districts, and let me just spell out the process for y'all, if I may. We're not going to vote on this this evening, because we wanted to make sure that, that all the appeals came in and were researched at least a little bit, you know, beyond, in a normal, I'll use the snow and ice assessment as an example. You know, we would get someone send in an email or a letter or something like that, and we review the files at the committee and then send out the roll. This, because this is being done at committee, the whole, and virtually, it's a little bit more cumbersome and complex. So I wanted to at least give a little bit of time for folks to absorb what we've seen and what we've been asked to do. So we do have quite a few appeals. I don't know how the best way to go through this is, we have them in our packets. I also have a list here that I can, we can read from, or if Mr. Vice President, if you'd like to just go through. Like I said, if we want to vote tonight, we certainly can vote to approve or deny these appeals, but it may be just worth looking at them. And then in two weeks, on the 14th, we will then vote on them, approve whatever, either the first roll or the revised roll, and then send that out to the council, full council for, for adoption. So I have a question from Councilmember Betts, or a comment, or a question, and then Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. My one question is, is this going to delay our ability to put around the rolls? Are we already delayed, or remember, there was something about winter taxes?
It's not going to be on the winter tax rolls, regardless.
As of December.
Yeah, because it's already December. What will happen is it'll hit folks, they'll get it out, and then when it's not, when they don't pay it, if they choose to do the installments, which most, I imagine, will, it will end up on their next tax roll. Let me just triple-check, I may be making this up, hold on just a second. I'm not making it up, but you know what I mean. Yeah, it's, it won't make it to the winter taxes this year.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless of whether we do it tonight or in two weeks. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. My question would be, with the fact that we've received either written or verbal testimony about appeals, after we review this, are we going to have an opportunity to call in those that we might question their logic on their appeals?
Well, only if we identify them this evening. So Council, Councilwoman Wood, we will review these again on the 14th, if we don't, if we don't approve them or deny them tonight, in which case, we could bring them in on the 14th to have a little bit more discussion with them, and then send it out to council. If we take complete action this evening, that would not be possible, obviously, because then, does that make sense? But maybe, I mean, one thing we could do then, Councilwoman Wood, is go through them this evening and make a decision as to whether we're going to do that, and then have Sherry coordinate with them for the next council meeting.
All I would like to do is to make sure that those that have articulated their concerns, that if there are different issues that we want to talk to them about, we have the ability to do that. You know, it's no different than the snow and ice, or sidewalks, you know, curb and gutter, those types of things. You know, they are invited into those meetings. Councilmember Dunbar has handled many of those, and do give the people an opportunity so that there's this face-to-face to be able to discuss some of those. I'm not saying that, you know, all of them, but I do believe that this is something that we, we should be able to have some additional discussion on.
Well, and there's another option that I guess I haven't spelled out yet, and as we could refer this to a smaller committee to take these up, if we wanted to, like, public service, which I'm comfortable doing, because this is an odd environment.
I see Councilmember Dunbar has her.
Councilmember Dunbar, I'm on that committee either way, so I'm not trying to shirk the decision here.
If I'm, I, I, I agree that it should go to public service, because we have had, we have had some very good valid appeals in the past, that if you didn't take the time to actually converse, it's kind of hard to get that all on paper, so I would not mind holding a special public service committee meeting to just do this appeal process.
All right, so I have one more hand from Councilmember Betts, but, Councilmember Betts, why don't you, why don't you ask your question, and then I will make my next statement?
I guess my question is about notification. I've been sending emails to every single person who I've had on that list, just to tell them that, you know, tonight was the night I would be hearing those appeals, I could come and give public comment if they wanted to, now that we're having this. I agree with having in public service and allowing more discussion. Is there any way that we can send out a notice that they can come to that, come to that point? That's one question. My second question is, if somebody hasn't filed an appeal already, I know that we're supposed to, everybody is supposed to file their appeal by the public hearing, but since we're postponing decision on this, is there time? I think, Jim, this is a question for you. Is there time for us to, or is there time for people to add to their appeal? Or, you know, put in a new appeal or anything like that at this point?
Two good questions, Councilmember Betts, and I actually, I think I know the answer to the first one and the second one is. So the first one, if we schedule it out far enough, we can, we can coordinate the folks that have appealed, because we have a record of their appeal, either through email, phone call, or, or we have their address, obviously, because they've appealed it that way. Secondly, no, that would require resetting the public hearing at council and going through the entire process again. The public hearing period has closed, and then, so anybody wishing to make public comment, they missed their opportunity on tonight, because we've already passed that, and the public hearing has already happened. That was when they should appeal. So absent delaying this process another month or so, that the answer is no to your question, but the first one is an easier, is an easier get.
Okay, thank you, perfect.
So I guess, Kathy, your hand is still up, or is that residual? Just wanted to make sure I don't move, I don't steamroll you. Okay, very good. So let's see, if I could have a motion then to re-refer this to the committee on public service, I would take that.
So moved.
Then moved by the Vice President? Any discussion, Councilmember Wood? Nope, surprised, so I don't think you were trying to speak.
Oh, I hit something by mistake, sorry.
I'm beginning to pick up on everyone's facial expressions to know when they actually want to speak and when they don't. All right, so Sherry, I don't see any discussion on the re-referral of this to public service. I will then just say, Councilmember Dunbar, if you could work with your committee and Sherry to figure out kind of the proper notification period for this, to make sure we get enough people, give the folks that have appealed enough notice to show up to the hearing. So obviously, not a hearing tomorrow, that would be great, and other than that, let's, let's take the roll call, please.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0.
Very good. We have two things next up, a couple things to place on file, Mr. Vice President, I turn it over to you for those. You see the motion on placing on file?
Sorry, struggling with my mute button. Yes, I would move to place on file the notification of Lansing bond sales results.
Right, it's been moved, is there a, no second required? Is there any discussion? Excuse me.
I'll take a roll call on that.
Well, before we do, the finance director wants to say something.
Okay.
Mr. Wittigan?
I know behind link, if we need to, just saying.
TV, can you let Mr. Wittigan in as a panelist?
Sorry about that, folks. Mr. Wittigan, you can go ahead and speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in before you adjourned really quick, so sorry to interrupt the process. Feel free to continue with the.
This was.
However, it seems like my interruption worked out timely for your issue with coffee.
No, okay, sorry about that, thank you. All right, Sherry, go ahead and call the roll, I apologize for that.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion to place on file carries 8-0.
All right, President Spatafor, I would move that we also place on file the housing and urban development audit penalty communication.
Very good, it's been moved, seeing no further discussion, Sherry, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
President Spatafor, I would like to have some additional discussion about these penalties, but if we're talking about just putting the information on file, I will support that as long as we have. um, I will support that as long as we have um, an opportunity at a later date to discuss the penalties, period.
Noted on my list of things we will discuss at a later date.
Thank you, yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Very good. All right, that is it for business in front of the committee, uh, Mr. Vice President.
All right, um, I I'm assuming we're moving into closed session, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would move um, that we enter into closed session pursuant to MCL uh, 15.268 of the Open Meetings Act. Um, this would be to consult with the city attorney to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state statute, uh, specifically to discuss a written legal opinion and written material from the city attorney, provided under attorney-client privilege, an attorney work product and which thought, which is also, sorry, exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act pursuant to MCL 15.243.
Very good. The motion has been made. Councilmember Wood?
Uh, thank you, President Spatafor. Um, can we be told exactly what we will be discussing? Um, and and I don't mean the document, but the topic in closed session.
Mr. City Attorney? I leave it to you.
I guess I would have to ask, the council is going to have to waive attorney-client privilege because the uh, document is subject to attorney-client privilege. And if you want to make a motion to waive it, then I will, I will see what the topic is.
Um, I would make a motion to waive it.
But we have a motion before us on closed session, so we need to dispense with it or pull it back.
I would pull my uh, motion for the time being.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Wood to waive privilege on the topic of the closed session into which we are attempting to enter. Uh, is there, okay, I don't see any more discussion, so let's go ahead and go with a roll call on that. Uh, five or six votes, Jim?
On that waiver would be five. To go on the closed session is six.
Very good. Uh, Sherry, please hold the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Councilmember Spitzley?
No, because I haven't said anything. We're just, we're just waiving privilege to say what the subject.
The subject is a legal memo.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero to release the attorney client, client privilege for the subject matter.
May I proceed, uh, Mr.?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
Alright, so the the topic is a legal opinion on the current state of the law on reducing, eliminating, modifying retiree healthcare benefits. That's the nature of the legal opinion.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Vice President?
Sure, so I would resubmit uh, my uh, motion to go into closed session.
Very good. And since it was already read for the record, we won't make you go through that again. Uh, Councilmember Wood?
Um, at this time, I will not be supporting going into um, closed session. I had asked for a um, city attorney opinion on the subject and an open meeting. Um, I believe with all the discussion that has um, been um, done on this topic between Ways and Means Committee of a Whole, public comment from um, the community that this is an uh, issue that needs to be discussed in an open session of of Committee of a Whole or council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Seeing no further hands, I would ask uh, for a roll call on going into closed session.
Member Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley has her hand up.
Oh.
Okay.
All right, I apologize. I I did it just as you had your head down. Um, you know, you know, I I struggle with this one going into closed session simply because, I mean, has because this has been discussed in the financial health team, it's been discussed, it's been discussed everywhere. And so I I I I struggle with, you know, having a further discussion um, in closed session regarding this. Um, I I don't think I'm going to support it.
I will start with the roll call again to go into to go into closed session. Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
No.
Councilmember Spitzley?
No.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries five three.
Motion does not carry.
Are we in six?
All right, um, we will move on. Um, we at a seven sixteen, folks. And um, we're going to adjourn in just a second, but I'm going to say in five minutes, we'll reconvene. It'll give me time to stop choking on whatever is caught in my throat. And you all time for a little bit of a stretch. So I'll see you back here at seven twenty one. Uh, stay in this meeting though, remember?
President Spatafor?
Yep, yes.
Um, my question would be, is the city attorney willing to have the discussion and then whether it's at this particular time or at another time um, in open session?
You know, um, should I answer that question?
Well, I would like to move on to our next meeting. So if we can add this to the agenda, why don't you answer your question as you, if you can't answer it, and we can add it to the um, to an agenda at a later date.
I I can answer it really quickly. I mean, this is an opinion, the reason for closed session is a written opinion on the legal position. It has nothing to do with the efficacy of the policy or whatever. This is uh, my responsibility to the city council is to give you a legal analysis of this issue, and that's all that this is about. Now, if you want to do that in open session, it's your call.
Councilmember Wood, I I have no problem doing it in an open session, but
Thank you.
Like to move on tonight if we could.
And and that's fine. We uh, we have a meeting on the seventh and one on the fourteenth, so.
Uh, we'll probably uh, add this to the special agenda for the seventh, um, or I'll talk with the administration to see if it's timely. If it's not timely and we can do it on the fourteenth, we'll do it on the fourteenth. So that special is as promised, brief, um, but we'll, we'll do it whatever makes the most timing sense.
All right, thank you.
Okay. This committee is adjourned, but now instead of seven twenty one, we're going to be set five minutes from now, which will be seven twenty three.